I finished up my bag.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order, the Mount Pleasant City Commission Meeting in Regular Session on Tuesday, February 20th. This time, I would like, well, I didn't get to, who would like to do this?
I'll be here.
Don't see what I hear. We have to replace our chaplain, I think. You got to do that. This time, if you please stand or remain standing after the prayer.
Pray with me, please. Father in heaven, we'd like to thank this opportunity to be here this evening and the business that we conduct for this city as a whole. May we please watch after all the members of this community and keep everyone safe. For Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Let the nation declare the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and justice for all. Thank you. This time, recorder, please call the roll.
Mr. Granberry?
Here.
Mr. Vegas?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Blankenship?
Here.
And Mr. Watt?
Here.
All present.
Being a coroner there with all present, being officially under order, this time, we will go into item number four, approval slash correction amendments from the prior meeting on January 18, 2018. Okay, the motion's been made to approve these meetings as received. Is second?
Second.
Do you second it? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. A black sign, the amendments are approved as received. Item five, awards, presentations, and appointments. Eight, swearing in of police officer Jenny Frost. Okay, Mike, you're gonna handle that part, please, sir.
Yes, sir. I'd like to present to you all, Miss Jenny Frost. She's been in dispatch, we're trying to get her out of dispatch. She is a sworn officer. She's been filling in with us a little bit on some open shelves, so we just want to go ahead and get her sworn in.
Jenny.
Aye. Jenny Frost. Jenny Frost.
You're hereby sworn.
You're hereby sworn.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
Named in the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Named in the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
For the office of a member of the police department.
For the office of a member of the police department.
For the city of Mount Pleasant.
For the city of Mount Pleasant.
Which I'm about to assume.
Which I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Tennessee.
And of the state of Tennessee.
That I will comply with.
That I will comply with.
And observe the provisions.
And observe the provisions.
Of the Charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
Of the Charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We brought a dispatch.
Mike, she lives in Mount Pleasant.
Uh, yes, sir, she lives on Redwood South.
Did she work before?
She worked here before, previously, as a dispatcher. Uh, she moved to Lewisburg, got hired in Lewisburg Police Department, got certified through Lewisburg, and then she moved back down here.
That's fantastic.
Didn't work it up.
Forty-nine days. Put her out of the field with my getting a little red, she was a pretty little girl. Child be taken.
Right.
I'll put the other way around.
Item B is an appointment to the Mount Pleasant Planting Commission Board. We had a resignation, as you know, on that. At this time, it's my privilege to offer your consideration, Mr. Junior Roberts. He lives outside the city on Massey Lane. He would qualify for that regional planting position. He's aware of what we're talking about doing with that. He has no problems with that. He agreed to serve as long as he can. So I'll put him before you if any questions about him. He manages a truck fleet here for a company out of Dolomite, Alabama. They run nine-to-eleven trucks here. Our, uh, guy, he's a very, a good company, very strong company. He's probably one of the very best people that I know of more than, you know, he just carries them back. He's in the car club, he's very active Mount Pleasant, he's very strong supporter of Mount Pleasant, even though he doesn't live in the city.
His wife was secretary of school.
Well, many, many years.
Years of work.
And there's no objection, I'll make the motion. Chair, would you accept the motion or the gratification? Mike, we made mine. Bill made that motion. Or seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, it's an appointment that's been approved. Item C, appointment to Mount Pleasant Power System Board on, uh, likely to occur next month, but prior board will meet prior to that, so we ask that they recommend to Mr. Dr. Mike Tyler to continue serving on. Mike has agreed to do that. He does an excellent job at the service term of that board. This time, it's my privilege to offer your consideration, Dr. Mike Tyler, to continue on that board.
I'll make that motion as well.
Make a motion. Mr. Judy Mads, seconded by Mr. Granberry. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. A black sign, that's for a gratification. Item six, completion review of unfinished visits from prior meeting. This is ordinance two zero one eight dash one zero one six, a public hearing and final reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance two oh one seven dash one zero zero five. Set ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining departmental functions in the city of Mount Pleasant for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, two oh one seven, and then June 3rd, two oh eight, providing an effective date.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the second reading. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. And we went over the changes in the budget at the study session, but if there's any specific questions, we're happy to answer them for you. We will have another budget amendment prior to the end of this fiscal year. This is the second for this fiscal year.
Okay. Discussion on this item? Want to understand what we're doing. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
And it is a public hearing, in case anyone speaks.
Yeah, I see, yeah. Anyone in the audience here to be for or against this ordinance? Okay, record show, no one spoke for or against that, please. Okay? Mr. Davis made that motion. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Blankenship? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. A black sign. Ordinance two oh zero one eight, one zero one six, passed. Item seven, report from the mayor. I know y'all tired of me talking about sidewalks. I'm about tired of looking at them. But, um, it's my report. It won't be too off, it'll take another couple of months. I've got to finalize some things, but if you don't want something to do, just write down and check our sidewalks and try to figure out what the line and rate will ever happen in Mount Pleasant if you get sidewalks.
And then try and figure out why we put sewer, why we put it.
It's really something, right?
Had something to do with sidewalks. There was no plan.
Secondly, I had a, you know, people contact me a lot. I have a petition, I'm not sure where any other commissioners got this thing or not, but I've got a hundred and sixty names plus some phone call, a hundred and seventy-four names, excuse me. Majority of these signatures, I've looked at, and they are legitimate. They're all people, I can tell, but most of them would be affected by the bypass out here. And what they're complaining about is those coming from Hampshire are going to, coming from Hampshire that way, are having to go down south approximately a mile and a half and back up a mile and a half. Total thing, she told me six miles, the one that first called me, it's not six miles, but it is aggravated. It's probably a little less than five miles. I went up and measured it. They're wanting TDOT to put a crossover somewhere between 166 and Mount Joy Road. I tried to explain to the lady that that has federal rights on it, too. This section we're dealing with has, I know has federal money in it, but they may or may not let it. If they do, that'd be fine, but it's not as simple as people seem to think it is. Can't just like, and I may go down a load of church and start drops the road. I mean, it's just not the way it's done it because you create more accidents. But, once you be aware of it, I'm gonna submit this petition as part of our minutes tonight that we do have this, or I'll take this to the priest's office in there and let everybody come by and look at it. I know it, like I say, I know it is a legitimate thing, and most of them do live in an area that will be affected. And I've taken a talk with them in TDOT, and I think he told you it would be February 19th, April 19th?
2019.
No, we're talking about a year.
And do you want us to submit that to TDOT, make copies?
They have one. They've already submitted it to TDOT.
Okay.
I asked their question, he said, no, we already submitted one to TDOT. I imagine Carrie's twenty, that's maybe they should have made it to Nashville.
Okay. They've been diligent by sitting there to get those signatures, rain.
Yeah, I don't care if it's cold.
On the road?
They've worked, they've worked very hard.
They've been going around.
Now, they're not, they're on.
Well, I'm having time to name, but they start out really right where petitions always start. And I told them that, name, address, phone number. And, uh, they start out that way, not to print, but they still do that. I mean, that's what it is. I mean, I'm simply with it.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
It's not our, it's not our problem.
I'm not sure if TDOT will be, they have them great. Okay, uh, the other thing, it never ceases to amaze me how we don't educate our constituents about city and county governments. I had a long email the other night, a gentleman was out somewhere, back in down the road, get some hollow. Eating my lunch, over, back to his road, hadn't been finished. It's just like it was last year. We didn't put ice, we didn't put down any salt on the hills out there. And so, you know, I put, kind of laughed a little bit, but I mean, people don't know, we're not doing a good job of informing right there, probably not. We're not doing a good job in government, letting people know who does what. And so, I sent him a nice text back and told him that it was the city limits he did it down around Havensville Church Bridge down in the border, and that we could not by law work on stuff outside the, outside our city limits, and that Van Bowshir was our county road superintendent, and that he was responsible for all the roads in Murray County outside of the city limits and the state and federal roads, and that, I emailed it over to his executive secretary, so I'm sure they have it, but it just brings to mind to me why we get paid off so many times that we just go, and I don't know what the answer is.
It doesn't pay attention.
It's been twelve years, and we thought he was known there by now, but I'm sure he found the votes in the elections, but he, his idea, and his question wanted something that's really, I mean, his statement, "I don't know why they call this Mount Pleasant." And he's telling us his address.
Yeah.
And they go back, and we had the old routes, Route 7, Mount Columbia, Route 5, Route 1 and 2, Mount Pleasant, and Mount Pleasant goes all out through there and all this way to where Hampshire's.
Some of them.
He thinks he lives in Mount Pleasant. And in one sense, the word he does, when he comes to the city of Mount Pleasant. So I just tell you that here, and make sure you have that stuff, it just, you probably don't have to. That's all I basically have, I entertain your questions.
And try to explain it to them.
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
In a manner in which you're not talking down.
No, I ain't talking down to them at all, it's just, you know.
Because they don't understand.
Yeah, no, they don't, it's not their fault.
No.
But if we wrote an article in the paper, if we had one, which we don't, I'm not sure they read, so I don't know how you. You know, I mean, we don't have, we don't have internet connections, they probably didn't have internet service down there.
I mean, I guess the best way for them to understand it is they don't pay taxes.
Yeah.
And so, they don't get city services.
Yeah, I just brought that to your attention, I thought it was intentional. Yeah. Uh, number eight, the monthly financial budget report.
Good evening. If you've been up here in the last couple of weeks, I'd say they're extremely busy. This is the last two weeks of our collection period on property taxes. They will be due February 28th, so we anticipate quite a few collections between now and then for those of us who wait to the last minute. And, um, but we have, up to this point, our collections, uh, seem to be doing very well. So I hope and anticipate we'd be close to our budget and figures by the end of February and may actually go on into March, since there will be a few that will, won't make it in long time. It'll be, we usually have a few come in around the first of March. We're also gearing up toward our software conversion. We've been talking about this quite some time, and local government actually probably this is the past week, and gotten it, we're actually, they're working on our files now, converting, trying to get those ready to convert, especially payroll. Payroll is first, the next step, and then after that will be the utility billings and the property taxes. Business licenses will not be included for a while because the, the software company has got some, um, they're working out some issues with the state, so until they get those worked out, they will not be, that will not be included. Uh, we're also inclu, uh, continuing on our cost of service studies for the gas and sanitation fund. We've sent them all the data, and they are working with that. We anticipate probably in the next few weeks that they'll be coming back to us, wanting more information. So that, that should be coming up in the next couple of months. For the month of January, uh, total revenue was sixty-one percent, um, which is right on target for that compared to last year. And now, we spent a year for the month, January, we're at sixty-four percent, which is a little bit higher, but a lot of that had to do with the cold weather, and so the gas, the gas increased, which our sales also increased, but we won't really, that won't be reflected towards the following month. The purchase of gas was up significantly in the month of January. Our tax balances, um, in the general fund, of course, during the time of year are, are up higher. Water operating account kind of holds steady at eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, and the gas fund checking the savings, and again, we do exploit the customer deposits, and that is at one point seven six two. That concludes my report. Anybody have any questions?
And you've heard that report, any questions? Chair, would you entertain a motion, please? Motion for approval, second?
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. A black sign, that has been received. Number nine, monthly report from city manager.
Mayor, I take all those departmental reports coming together to create the city that's available the first of the month, online, and, um, in, in the lobby for anything you want to do.
Any questions?
I have a question, Chief, maybe just with a little reminder. How did it work with asking the parents not to line up in front of the school?
It's still an ongoing process. We still have some that line up early.
That's the will.
Yeah, so it's, so, all we can do is tell them. We're trying to get them not to line up till 2:15.
Asking the parents not to line up in front of the school, they start lining up at 12:30.
They were told not to line up before 2:30, I was told.
2:15, it was two, we pushed it back to 2:15 because they were lining up in the middle, and then pre-K was starting to form a line, so if you were headed toward the middle school, you couldn't get there. You couldn't get pre-K.
You can't get that very, very late.
Right, yes, and, and.
Without them all.
Every year, it gets worse and worse and worse, and eventually, the school system is going to have to route that road all the way around the elementary school. It's not giving them that. We try to work with them as much as we can.
I mean, is it against the law for them to do it?
It is.
Yeah, they're stopping the toll of the street. I mean, you cannot.
You can't start lining up.
And you can't get out of the parking lot either, if you, if you have to go into the school for anything else.
Right, we've, we've got it sectioned off where they're supposedly supposed to stop. We, we're over there every day.
Yeah, I love the people that sit down in their lawn chairs under the tree.
But once it parks, it doesn't take ten minutes. No, they don't do that anymore. We don't let them exit the vehicles anymore.
I know, but they used to.
Yeah, oh, they used to, yeah, they used to park their cars there at like 10 o'clock in the morning and leave. But, yeah, we stopped all that, but they actually have to be in the car.
I just wondered how it was going over, because I've heard some complaints.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a work in progress.
Thank you.
Any further questions, any department heads? Any department head like to say anything about any problem now or something else today? I think we've got another.
Big now?
I think we have another water leak, I thought on the way here.
Yeah, I was gonna bring that, I forgot that, I wouldn't think here, but we.
What location was that?
The first avenue on the box back, we won yourself? Right about the same spot that you broke two weeks after the pain. Yep.
I think it's about there, I walked by there earlier, just probably about five o'clock, you know, like the bow's leak.
It's not, we, we came through about the same time.
I don't worry about it, even before, did not.
There's several bows leak, it's like Harry and Colleen, it's accurate.
I thought maybe we were well enough past the freeze thing, you only come out two weeks after the freeze, it must have been going to break.
The out of the sound.
Oh, this daughter's gonna.
Okay, item ten, special force from other city departments committed to the evacuation. You have anything you want to look to?
No, we're hoping by next month, we'll have something on wastewater from rural development, but we don't have it today.
Right. Item eleven is new business. At this time, it'll be ordinance two zero one eight dash one zero one seven, first reading. An ordinance to amend Title III, Chapter II, court administration of municipal codes of the city of Mount Pleasant by repealing and replacing Section 3 dash two oh two, related to imposition of fines, penalties, and costs.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the first reading of this ordinance to get our court administration signs and costs to where they need to be. Chief's done a lot of work on this, to put it in front of you. If you have any questions on what is outlined here, we'd be happy to go over it.
Any questions, Chief? Chair, would you entertain a motion, if no further question?
Take a motion to accept this presented?
Uh-huh, don't you accept this presented, second? Do you second it? Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? That ordinance is passed on first reading. I congratulate you for doing that. Those kind of things should be reviewed every year.
Jack get all the words.
Well, I congratulate Jack then.
Thank you, Jack.
If Jack assigns somebody else, I congratulate them. Those are good things to do, you have to keep up with that. They're gonna wait for you.
It does, yeah.
Item B, ordinance two zero one eight dash one zero one eight, first reading. An ordinance repealing and replacing Title VII, Chapter VI, the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code related to sale and use of fireworks within the corporate city and the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
Mayor and Commissioners, we've discussed at length the fireworks ordinance, and what's in front of you is what we believe we got out of the study session on Thursday. It is not a huge change from the existing ordinance, and our existing ordinance pretty much follows the state law, but, um, your copy still has highlighted areas where we, we took a look at things, but, um, Chief is here to answer any questions that you have, and I know there's some individuals in the audience that have attended and have some interest in this ordinance as well. Miss's first reading again.
All right, we'll talk about this.
Justice, if I'm not mistaken, what, the 27th come up for the June shooting of Florida?
I'm correct, I did.
The 27th, listen, that brought up.
The day?
But, yeah.
Yeah.
It was, I looked out, I thought that was brought up.
The 27th of June?
Yes.
There was a discussion about reducing it by five days, but I didn't feel like we had the support of everybody, so we kept it.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, I just, you know, it's one of the themes of a study session. You take it home and you think about it, and that's where I'm left at, at the 27th.
The 27th of July, I'm left.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like that's a, you know, that's a long journey.
Is that the sale date during your 27th?
No, 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 the shooting date.
Okay.
What section is that in?
Seven.
Six, seven, six, oh, two.
Where's three?
Seven, six, oh, nine. I've got mine down on different places.
But I'm okay with it, but I'm just thinking, I'm.
What, what are you proposing?
The 27th, I mean, that, that was brought up.
On the 27th, through July 5th, is what you're suggesting?
I think what you said, Mike, is that they were selling it, you might as well go and let them shoot.
And let them shoot.
That's right.
That's what we were doing when we talked to the people that were presenting in that. That was clear. And, yeah.
Right.
Because I think they also said during the time they did the sale.
First few days, correct?
Well, it was far from, um, it wasn't anything big.
I'm just going by, I guess, you know, some of the friends that the lady was talking about, you know, for the, for everything here in the city limits, and that's, and that represents not outside of the city limits, and that's my, with the.
I thought the motion included begin the sale and use the same day. That's what, that's how I would.
There was definitely discussion about if they're going to be sold to be able to use that.
Yeah, my original suggestion was June, the 25th, be, cut five days off that, from the 20th to the 25th, and Mike goes two more days past that line.
Well, I mean, the only reason I'm doing that is because the 27th was brought up, so.
Well, I'm gonna vote for it, have this vote.
Yeah, I would, too.
It's, it's, I'm gonna have to insist that our police department, uh, be very frugal in getting them, that's all I take.
It's just a kid.
But it's gonna, it's gonna probably be worse this year than it was last year, if the weather's good, because Columbia's shutting, Columbia's shutting it down, they're coming somewhere. It'd be easier to drive into Mount Pleasant.
And I think we, we all, we're in agreement that we're, this will be up for review.
Yeah, yeah.
Next year, because of that, we felt sure that it would be.
I hate to ask the police, you're out here to protect and save us from some really serious things, to be putting something like that, but maybe if we can get them on attention on the front end, knock on the door, talk to mom and daddy, mom and daddy's gonna, the juvenile, sock in them. Maybe they'll get their attention. I mean, I hate psych these kids in the juvenile court, but, you know, well, that's, they, they, they need to do it. I mean, it's such a, if I had a dollar grab firecracker I shot, I couldn't, couldn't give all my money away. I shot them time, my granddad had country stores, I got free ones.
Well, and I don't think, I don't think we're being unreasonable, for those of you on here, I don't think we're being unreasonable at the fireworks being shot, but it's the hours of, and, you know, as a parent and a grandparent and a teacher of, and in light of, of what going on, and my dad always said this, too, that there's not anything you should be doing after 12 o'clock, which couldn't be before 12 o'clock if it's legal. And, you know, I would used to laugh and say, little did you know, but as a parent, I know. He was right, because I could get away with it before 12 o'clock and whatever I was gonna do after 12 o'clock and get in a plenty less trouble for us. So, you know, I think we have to be a example for and supporting the police, too, and saying, you know, of that, and, and not turning away and saying, oh, they're just kids being kids when they do get spied for it. And I know we have a city court judge that, um, is gonna, is not gonna just scrap them on the knuckles and say, oh, you know, it's okay, and, and doing it, and then maybe we won't have the problem. You know, and those kids are gonna be in juvenile court here, not in, in Columbia, and that's gonna make.
It'll be, it'll be big court.
It's juvenile, juvenile's what I'm coming.
Any ordinance, though?
It'll be right here.
Yeah, it'll be here, so it'll be a big difference than being in.
Blessing for them, then.
Yeah.
Know what happened to them.
Yeah.
County court.
Yeah, because, yeah, I've, I've had.
I would take it for certain, I would.
Yeah, I've been in both, in both of them, so, you know, with, with kids there, with my kids, so, I, I'm.
Well, the reason I suggested the 25th, cutting five days, was so they wouldn't be as, as many, as much temptation to shoot them as early. If you knock five days off, they gave these people who didn't want to shot at all, you got people adamant, they don't need to be shooting them, which I disagree with them, but, you know, we go along with it, go along with it, so. Leave it like it is, I guess, but, um, except the little, little divvy thing they did right there. I don't see much changing. I don't see much changing. You tried and you just have to see how it goes, it doesn't go. But it is going to put, I think, there's going to be more people upset about it, they're going to watch it, they didn't call last year, they're going to call this year, so. Stand as best you can, I guess. Well, how are we going to leave it, somebody, we need to have, we need to read it out, however you want it.
Mayor, I made the motion, or the recommendation at the work session, and I'll make the motion to be accepted against selling as well as using on the 20th through the 5th. Everything.
And on December 31st.
And December, or shooting, not selling. The vendors said there was no need to be yelping.
They said they could simply leftover what Sunday, Saturday.
Yeah, that's in here too. So that's basically as written.
As presented.
Bill, before we finish your motion, if you would, would you add into that suggestion, I had it right here just moments ago, where I put in one that Mr. Bronner gave us about the, yes, excuse me. This was a suggestion from the Massy and Bronner families, limit fireworks, that's okay, we can touch that. Provide anyone who buys fireworks, no matter the quantity side for the flyer, safety information. Police chief said that they got something, if they got something, the state come down and they give them something from state. Who said they got?
They said that they got something from state.
And then inform each customer of fireworks orders and the times that are approved for shooting fireworks. If you can do that, look, you're probably going to get tagged if you shoot them at 10 o'clock, you know, except on certain nights. Y'all can put that on the flyer some way, and then charge, and then charge those to choose to break the order for shooting fireworks outside of a lot of time of the fine, so that comes back to the police department. Y'all can put that information on, that fireworks can only be shot, let's say, what, thanks to this, 10:00 P.M. And then, I think, 12:00, 1:00, 1:30. We didn't change it, we left it at 1:00.
12:30.
We did move it to 12:30.
So we can make that, we can add that language as a requirement to the sellers for second reading.
And can I say that just seven minutes?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to make the motion to include for the vendors to provide the flyer with the safety information as well as the times that are approved for shooting within the city of Mount Pluton. That work for you, Mayor?
Yeah, fine. Okay, further discussion on this? Can you read back just now pretty much what he just said? Or everybody on, anybody in the office hears anything wrong, if fireworks didn't have anything to say about it? You know, just tend to go back where we are, just hit this highlight button.
Well, we've kept it as written in front of you, from the 20th to July 5th. And we have the, the hours of, mind in front of me. That ceases at 12:30 A.M., should not be discharged before 10:00 A.M. And we'll add that the, any vendor selling any fireworks will pass out a flyer noting the, of the times that they can and can't shoot, and to expect.
And I do want that fourth thing on there, that could be texted by the police department. That text needs to be on there, because I don't say, I didn't know.
Do we just set an amount of fine?
I'm sorry?
Do we set an amount of the fine?
$50.
$50.
He can't go $50.
Okay, I didn't, that's what I'm asking, it needs to be put on there, they need to know what the fine is.
Up to 250.
$50.
Plus court.
Judge said easily charge 15, but he can't, up to 250.
I think it should be $50. If you're going to do it, you know, it's got to have some taint in it.
But we can't control that. That's what it gets in court. You have no control on that whatsoever.
He can suggest.
Yeah, that's all we can do. Okay, does everybody understand what we're voting on now? Motion's been made and duly seconded. And the new, the incorporated data, which we just said will be included in, as we modified this audit, this particular ordinance. Chair, will you entertain a motion to, or vote for this, keep that motion?
We need a second.
We need a second.
One second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like sign, that motion is passed on first reading. Okay, number 12, comments from citizens, do we have any comments about sign up? Okay, no comments. Any commissioners have any?
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to, again, for those that have not been a part of some of these meetings, the planning commission intends to go from a regional planning commission to a municipal planning commission, which is going to help save a tremendous amount of time for Robert, who's working over and coding and planning, not having to worry about what's happening outside the city limits from 10 or 12 miles out towards Lawrence County and wherever. And that's the reason why the mayor made the comment that Mr. Roberts understands that when he comes up, it will probably be a very short time, because he would be one of the two that will be affected by us narrowing that down to a municipal or a regional. The thinking behind that was the case of a lot of the, of the members of the community that were in somewhat of the same belief that a lot of the commissioners were in. Commissioner Graber would like to speak up on this, I wish you would too. That we need to be narrowly focused on what we've got going on in this city right now. Number one, quit worrying about what's going on 20 miles outside of our community. Number two, will be the cost that will be associated with our employees not having to run and do what they can't control anyway. Because if we say yes and the county says no, it's no. And if we say no and the county says yes, it's yes. So we can't win.
The permits they give from us, they got to go to the county anyway. It's like double jeopardy, so.
It's saving a lot of people's lives there.
I mean, I understand why we would do anything differently, because we are small.
The mayor gave a really good reason why we did that the other month. And I understand that, that time has changed. And I just personally, and I'm not speaking for everybody, but we need to be narrowly focused on what we've got going on.
Offices got three.
Yep.
That's what happened to them when they wrote it.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody is understanding what we're doing.
Any department has anything that could bring your attention? Now, if you can.
Oh, sidewalks. I'm trying to get into it, but Locust Street is a danger zone. And we're going to get your child killed if we don't.
No, you're speaking on Locust Street, on North Locust or South Locust? On second, from First Avenue?
It's North Locust.
North Locust?
You think north, yeah, North Locust. There are no sidewalks on North Locust.
No.
On Locust Street itself, that's one of those things where you've got sidewalk almost complete on the east side, all the way up. In fact, it, on the west side, that's a whole different story.
Yes, somebody.
It just disappeared. We came onto that, find that world, that road, it was slammed in like that, stopped there, so.
We have a lot of kids, young kids walking in the street and coming between cars to get out of the way. And I mean, you barely can get two cars down from that. If it's more parked on the side of the street, you can't, you've got to wait on the other. So when you got a car parked on the street and cars coming up and kids dying out, I mean, nothing makes sense to wait and get a lawsuit for the sidewalk.
And if the weather gets warmer.
That's, that's going to be in my report, that's a major artery, also other major arteries, Third Avenue from Locust.
Number two.
There. And, but there's a little problem with where we are right there, but the sidewalk stops on First Avenue almost where the Shackle's house was, where Bobby lived, and so that would have to be digged. Then it's banned all the way up to the other end, to get to where the old food was.
Think about First and Walnut? Because we, we actually, we accept that property owner a bid, because if you go further down on Walnut, he has a framing sidewalk, and he paid for half of it.
Well, yeah, and that can really, sidewalk, no, I'm talking, it's actually this side of it, it's back this way, not the Shackle House on the corner. That sidewalk, if you see it, where you're talking about, it's buried up under there. The way I'm talking about it is from Locust Street, a county in front of Ace Hardware, back up to where the Shackle, the White House is right there. And that, that carries all the way back down to Main Street.
The area around, and there around the school, it's hit, as the mayor said, it's hit the miss. The other thing is to explain it to our constituents, because more questions about why we don't have schools on, why we don't have caution lights, and that, they don't understand that's a state highway going through town. And that's not our, we have to go with the state roads, with the state roads, but we can't just do things on Main Street. You know, we have to go through the state and get them done, and that takes, it takes time.
They take their time.
And money.
And they take their time and money, and I didn't explain it to, but, you know, we're getting things, there's complaints about when the times aren't picked up and put away. I mean, if they can complain about it, they complain about it. But, you know, just to get people's caution, because as the weather warms up, the kids are going to be walking more and more and coming downtown. There was a sewer in downtown, didn't know back then, it's the least, so I don't know where they come from.
Last night, I talked to Kate about the state chief, I ran into six, didn't run into him. I saw six bicycles last night after dark, well after 7:00 on Gray Lane. One out of six had a light on, one. We're going to have to do something about that, and I don't know what you're going to do with that. Somebody's going to kill them. I mean, I'm one of those people, I never would get over, you go to my grave, I'd still be upset about it. But they're not thinking.
Yeah.
No way I'd ride a bicycle in daylight.
Probably didn't have a helmet on, did it?
No helmet.
Yeah, oh, no, no helmet. They were people enjoying themselves, having a good time. One of them probably might have been a fan, I'm not sure. Two of them were adults, three of them were adults for sure. But y'all might kind of give them a warning or something, can, just say that it might save their life.
Might be a project for school right now, too, with safety.
Well, we've had some marsh weather.
The weather's so warm, people are out.
Enjoying each other, that's good. Don't be old footy, I don't want to get a key of these.
I want to make sure that everybody got the email from Loretta about the budget meeting, moving from a Saturday to a Thursday, starting at 4:00 on May, May 3rd. So we couldn't find a Saturday.
I cracked my screen to that, he read it.
When did you do that?
May 3rd, what time?
4:00.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have it as an evening session, rather than a Saturday session. We'll definitely send out more information on it.
No further business, and Chair, we'll take a motion for German, please. We're going to reach to Germany, 642.
I'm taking orders, I'll get to you. You want one too?
You need to be paid now?
What's it going to?
Uh, it's like, it's just like.
You need money now, Jacqueline?
No, I'm not getting orders.